Good evening and welcome to the Garfield Heights City School District Special Board Meeting Work Session. Today is Monday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, according to tonight's meeting to order. Mr. Salupa can I roll call please?
Ms. King?
Here.
Ms. Dube? Ms. Morrison?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Ms. Daniels?
Present. Can I have a motion to amend and adopt tonight's agenda? The amendment request is to include add item number, item two point four entitled other matters for the purposes of board members to bring matters to the table during our work session that may not be on tonight's agenda. Can I have that motion please? Don't move. Mr. Salupa, that was moved by Ms. King and second by Ms. Thomas. Can you have roll call please?
Ms. King?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Morrison?
Yes.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes. The first item on our agenda for this evening is our discussion. And I would like to turn this over to Mr. Hanky. He'll be discussing the middle school assessment presentation.
Thank you, President Daniels. As way of introduction, I'd like to say that Mr. Salupa and I engaged TDA Architects and David Riley, construction attorney, Rick Maniloff on council, to take a close look at the middle school and what our options may be to either renovate or replace the building. At this point, that's what they are, it's a mediated and thorough analysis of the middle school. And then presentation to Mr. Salupa. I'd like to turn over to Mr. Salupa to go through the analysis and the options that they did come up with.
Before you start, can you let us know what TDA is?
They're called, TDA, them design architects. And they've been our architects in the district for the past ten years. Doing, and they were the ones that the, the police and the Elmwood renovations.
What was their name again?
Dan Wayfar, them design architects. And, and design architects. Rob Gild. .
President Daniels, the power just shut down on the Al camera. If you just want to wait one minute, it's booting back up, I'm sorry.
Nice.
It's now.
So we have a PowerPoint presentation and you have the presentation in front of you. And I'm also putting it up on the screen for the public viewers. And it's going to be, if they want to go into board docs, this PDF version of this is in board docs. And we'll stick it on our website too. So what we asked TDA to do as part of the strategic plan was to address the middle school. So what TDA did is they came in and they looked at everything in the middle school. And they do that using the OFCC's Design Manual, the OFCC, the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission. That is the benchmark for OFCC funding. So you go in and they do a full assessment of the building. And then when they come back out, the assessment of the building and tying in certain areas then tells us kind of where we fall out, whether, and we're not, we're ahead of our game. It's the school funding from the state, but it'll tell us whether it's eligible for funding for build new or eligible for renovation based on what they find and how different things are. And so what they did is they went in and evaluated the, I'll just throw that up there, sorry. Let's see if that works, but look at that. That value when it works. So what they went in is they did an evaluation of the condition age, to use the design manual, building code, regulations, and the cost guidelines, the latest cost guidelines from the Ohio Facility Construction Commission. So what they do is they go in and we actually walked around with them, I did. They do a twenty-three point checklist, and I'm not going to go over all twenty-three because you have it there and it's up on the screen. But they went anywhere from in the basement, looking at boilers, to up out, we walked the routes. So HV, you know, everything, the electrical system, they pore over the whole building and they assess each area. Take pictures and they go through and they assess each area based on what they found or what they find. And then they put together this master report, which is on that. So they came to Chris I and Sean and they came out with a thirty-page report analyzing all the building systems. And what they really did, and I didn't put this in the PowerPoint, because what they do is they take each system, they analyze it, and then they put a cost to it, to replace everything else. So it goes down and you build up into a cost. So what they did is, so you go through, you put all these costs, and then you see where all these systems are. What looks good, what doesn't look good. Well, it's middle school from sixty-two, a lot of it didn't look good versus what looked good. But because we just did lighting and everything, that looked good. But the rest of the systems are pretty much outdated. We knew that, we knew what coming in, but we wanted an idea of what the middle school looked like, what a third-party assessment would be, and what were their results? What did you come up with? So they came up with three options. Well, you probably will deal with the first two options, but we'll go over them anyways. The first option is building new, a whole brand new building. New KA facility for nine hundred students, square footage of one twenty, or twenty-six thousand five hundred. And that estimated cost with the built-ins construction cost would be forty-four billion. So that was option one. So then they came in with option two. Renovate the existing middle school. Same nine hundred students, same square footage, estimated cost for renovation of thirty-three million. Okay. So then we had a third option that we kind of were floating around. And the third option was called the hy, we call it the hybrid. And it was renovate the gym music building and build a new academic building. Because we have, what, Chris, we have, we have one of the biggest middle school gyms because it was all high school gym. And if we could preserve that fact and save some costs and just renovate that, we thought, you know, what would that look like? So that estimated cost was thirty-six point five million. So then we looked at, okay, which of the three options do we like? Well, the first thing is, is we have some challenges and it's always, always about money, the financing. So Ohio law has, what they say, a debt limitation of how much schools can borrow. And Mr. Riley looked over our debt limitation along with our bond counsel, Rick Maniloff. And we still have outstanding debt to, from the previous bond issues of the high school, the way of foster. Those don't come due until twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Now, our issue with Garfield Heights was our valuation trends for the last ten years were always going down. So the valuation going down does not allow us to get to a level where we can go back out to the voters and borrow because that nine percent threshold, if we were still exceeding it with the current bond issues in place. So we don't have any capacity to go out for a bond issue to fund the middle school. Because, and, but the good news is the assessed valuation is going up, but still it needed to jump major increases so we can go out for a bond issue. Okay, so that's our challenge. We want to do something with the middle school. We have three options, how do we fund it? Okay, so what are our, our, geez, we spit it out, what are alternatives? And that's what we started looking at, going to, going that route. So the first alternative is going back to the OFCC and asking them if we could jump back into the CFAP portion. We were help in the beginning, we segmented out for the elementary schools. So the last piece was, and so we completed that project with OFCC. But we still had the middle school to contend with. So what can we do? So we drafted a letter, we're going back out to OFCC and say, hey, wait a minute. We were at, we, they were paying twenty-three percent back in two thousand and two, we were paying seventy-seven percent of that project. Well, you know, that changed, but there's no way, once we were locked into twenty-three percent, we're locked into twenty-three percent. So we're, we're drafting a letter as we speak, and we're going to send it down to the OFCC requesting to jump back into their CFAP program. Two things that, uh, construction facilities, I'll get that in a minute. Just, it's alluding to construction, yeah, I'll look at that again. Yeah. It's, I'll get that.
Classroom facilities assistance program.
There we go, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
And the, and the Al program was an expedited part of that back in the day. But, you know, most, most districts go the classroom facilities portion of it. So first, the first step was, okay, can we go back to the OFCC? We're requesting any little bit, like if we could still get twenty-three percent of that, of any funding for cost of a new middle school, why not try to take that opportunity? So that's what we're doing, that's our step. So we have, and we're also looking at, in S R two and S R three, we built in some funding for windows, HVAC, some of the other areas of the middle school that we were targeting. So we have S R funding, but how can we use this as part of the other issues? How can we use this as part of a, I'll just call it a full-blown middle school project at this time? So how can we use that S R funding? And not just like fix certain things of the middle school, still not get what we want? So what does that look like? How can we do that? So if we jump ahead and we say, well, if we go with the hybrid, we can use the S R funding to renovate the gymnasium and the music areas. All new HVAC, all new windows, all new roofing. And that would be legally used S R. So what does that do? That puts us down to the recommended next steps. So what does that do for that project? One, it lowers the cost, if I could, we could use S R money. Two, if we go, and there it was, the Ohio Facility Construction Commission, and we, and that, the CFAP there. But what it does is that, you know, and I'm not getting my head of ourselves or ourselves here with that hybrid. But the hybrid allows us to use S R. Not to say that we made a decision, but the hybrid allows us to use S R. But by going and working with the OFCC, if they agree to a project with us, then we don't have to worry about a debt limitation and we can go out for a bond issue because we're working with OFCC. So now we're not limited to a debt limitation. We can go on a bond issue if we're working with OFCC. So that's a clear option that lets us go into. So that's why we want to target OFCC first. And then if hopefully we'll pick the option that, that's just our needs, you know, we'll have to talk about that more. I don't want to say now, but we do have the S R money if we do hybrid. And then what ends up happening is if the OFCC agrees to the project, whatever it is, we can go out the bond issue, whether it's renovation, hybrid, new. We go out and then we go on the ballot. And that ballot issue also could include, should includes dealing with the athletic complex in a, in a big picture type of move. So, I mean, that's the biggest thing. On top of that, we need to get an estimated cost for what it would take just to renovate and do all that work on the the gymnasium music building. We need to get a cost for that because S R monies go away. We got to make sure that we, if we're going that route, we're tying in S R monies. To do that, we need to get those costs, we need to plan that out. Because if that's what we end up doing, that work has to be done like by next summer. So we spend the S R two monies by the deadline. So what, our next step is we need TDA to come back out and do a full-blown cost assessment, engineering cost assessment for the, just the gymnasium music area, which is roofing HVAC, windows, that whole nine yards, as I called back in the day. That'll, that'll support the S R expenditure. And then on top of that, them, you know, once OFCC jumps on board, then we have the timeline, bond issue. When we target a bond issue, what do we target the amounts for? What's the timeline working back, backwards to get something done? Then the last thing is to determine community engagement strategies. Do we just go out, do we want to do, make a decision here on which area to go? And then to bring the community in on the design phase, which probably, you know, there's going to be different designs, what that looks like. Do we want the community? That's not a discussion for today, but something that we need to consider moving forward when we go out for a bond issue, because we are going to need community engagement to get a bond issue passed in this project. One of the things we've also been kicking around and see, I've got a header on here, where did I have that? Missed that page, I thought I had something on here, but I think what we were talking about, and I don't know where I, I thought I had it here. If you look at number three, and I skipped over this one. Part of what we're looking at is some of the bond issues fall off in two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six. So if we target, and this is where our financial advisor comes in to see an associate. So if we target a bond issue and we backload it, and we have minimal payments, and this is just over, this is Rick Maniloff. But if we have, and just going through, if we have a bond issue that is structured in such a way that the major payments come in the place of when the other bond money falls off, the village, that village for the other bonds falls off. But if we target those that, you just keep the same village, and then the bond issue, we call it the no new village bond issue. And that's a way to kind of structure a bond issue, knowing that it's going to come off in two years, three years. So if your bond issued, so that's a strategy that we need to look at too, because we know we have some bonds coming off. So, and that's all, that's all part of the strategy of funding a a, a new, a new middle school, renovated middle school, or a hybrid middle school. But it's a way of addressing the last piece of our facilities. And when I say addressing the last piece, we all know the athletic complex, but we're, we're going to try to lump that in as part of that, and to make it, you know, a one big project, one big thing for the community and get that done. So that's really what, why we did the assessment moving forward. So we have an idea, what's it going to take to address the middle school complex? That's just exactly what, where we're at today. And so we have some, moving forward from here, we have some things that we need to get started working on to address that. So that's upfront on the radar, and we're tying it, we say we're tying it into the strategic plan. It's part of the facility strategic plan is the middle school and the athletic complex. So this is the first step in moving forward with that, addressing those needs.
Mr. Salupa? And that this, this is a public meeting and we're having this discussion. I don't want to assume that the board members in or the community understands why we need to replace our middle school and why we are prioritizing this on our strategic plan. So if you could just
Oh, absolutely.
kind of tie in why we're even having this discussion, why it ended up on our strategic plan. Just ensure that when we can justify this discussion.
Yeah, well, they're, they're, from, I'll go from the facility standpoint, and I think Mr. Hanky and Mr. Pat can go from the educational piece of it. Because let's just say back, back when that facility was built in nineteen sixty-two, it was built for a high school for eighteen hundred students with just the basic type of education. Well, we know back in nineteen sixty-two, everything you need was right there. Today, the facility, one is, and this is the biggest piece right now, is no air conditioning. Univents, no central processing of air, electrical grid that really doesn't support technology. We just, you know, you know, lighting that's outdated, the roofs are getting old. We're, you know, we're constantly having to fix the roofs, the duct pointing. We're constantly going to have to start doing something there. Cafeteria area, the kitchen is way too small, the serving lines are way too small to serve everything that we need. Kitchen's way in the back, down below some of the rooms, it's just, it's not a, it's not a good middle school facility. And so for today's learning environment, from a strictly a facility and maintenance standpoint, it, it takes a lot of money to maintain a facility that, that's not giving us everything that we need from a HVAC conducive to a student, student learning type of environment. And I'll let Mr. Hanky talk about the educational piece there.
President Daniels, if, if you see the middle school models of team. So for example, we do have team in our middle school. And generally, the newer buildings are, are designed around the team concept. So for example, you have some math, science, social, play, language, arts classrooms in a pod with accommodary in the center. And that's what you see at some of the middle schools, including Dickory Michael Heights, they've done to really facilitate that team environment. And then also, and then, you know, kind of what, what happens though is they come out with teams, go to their specials or on course such as art or physical education, or things like that. So you have step, that facility is usually separated and outranked. So that, you know, the old, the old nineteen sixty-two, it was quite frankly called like the factory model of education. If we always stack on top of each other. And that was what, what was, what was considered a good project at sixty-two. At this point, it really doesn't serve as well as we would be able to in terms of our middle school standards. Much more educationally focused environment, it's much more enriched through the actual physical building beyond obviously the amount of windows, electrical, things of that nature. You know, just the way physical space is working, it is, is, is quite different. It is positive where we're able to have those teams all, all have their own separate areas. So they can facilitate running large groups, smaller groups, etc. There's a lot more flex space than have in these buildings now. So they, I, I mean, I've seen some models with like, you know, big doors open up and stuff like that. So you can, you can have a lot of flex space and you, and you can move around that. Um, you know, as far as the education component of the facility goes, there's going to be a huge step forward. And I, and I think too, as part of that, we've renovated all our elementary schools. They all have the latest, not the greatest, the latest assistance programs, about thirteen. And then you go up to the middle school, it's like taking the step back versus progressing on to the high school, which is the crown people.
Thank you.
And it's more gracious of the outside as we go forward. It's just that we need to get this all really.
Was there any other questions relative to the presentation this evening?
I know you mentioned reaching out to TDA again for an assessment of the middle school gymnasium music area. But we need to reach out to them again for an athletic complex sponsor. That's something that I picture.
In fact, they, they've already did preliminary designs for the athletic complex, but we would ask them to update what they got.
Do you say, no, do we need no approximate cost or?
The product's the cost from the athletic complex. If we do it, let's just say we do everything that we want and do it right. We're looking at four point five million. Turf track, usual track, stands, locker rooms, deceptions stands, restrooms, yes.
And I have a question in regards to that. Is it possible to use some of the health and wellness and what S R funds for that athletic complex? Because it is, you want to help and wellness?
We, we asked that question, but the hard part is, is two things. One is the, you know, we can't use it for S R for that. And the wellness funds are now, typical piece that the wellness funds are now rolled into the state funding formula. There's no more wellness funds, separate out. But we have a solution though, I think that, you know, if this middle school project that to do everything that we want to, but the and every little bit we save with S R, some of the other money we can use.
So if we, just say if we want to put option three, the hybrid model, we, we could we could possibly, if, if we needed to fully renovate the space, approximately forty-four million is estimated. But if we kind of go with the hybrid model, we're down to thirty-six point five and three point, a portion of that, we can actually, it can even be a little lower because we can use S R's funds as a portion of it, which kind of almost can compensate at that athletic
Yes.
piece on it as a bonus, or something else funded it.
You're, you're absolutely right. I think that the way, when I talk about community engagement as a next step too, is we need to show the community like anything, when we're asking for more money, how we're actually saving that money by asking for, when we ask for money, it's different steps that we're doing. Like a no new village bond issue, like they were using S R's to lower the cost so we could fund this. So you don't have to pay even more to fund these projects that we need. And that's just the strategy. And then, you know, part of it's going to be the design piece too, this, you know, what it looks like in engaging the community to, to buy in what we're doing. We think, we think by taking these next steps, doing this assessment today and getting this out to the community. We are, we hear it all the time from ours, our standpoint is, what are you doing to address the middle school? The air conditioning is the biggest thing. And then the teachers, we got univents in there in the later time, and they're opening windows because those things don't shut down, it gets too hot. So it's just, and then if you want to plug in more technology, you really can't put the grid, it's wrong. So I, I think it's, yeah, was it, is it doing what it needs to do today? I'm not saying it doesn't, but there's an opportunity here to make it a, take care of the last piece of our facilities. And I do like this part of our strategic plan.
Yeah, the community participating here will show us that this is an area that we need I know this is the first step tonight. I know this is the first step tonight, but um you guys are, um, what are your next steps from the board? Like when we decide to engage us in three months from now, six, I mean, when?
I think the next step is next month, I want to get approval for T D A to do that piece and so we know how much money, how much money we're needing that we're, you know, it ain't just the hybrid. We don't go that, but at least we'll know. And we're going to bring in, bring in senior associates to talk about it, though. No village foundation, how would that look like? What would the strategy be? How would we work something like that and sell that to the community? And I think the last piece is, you know, which option do we want to go with? And then we start to, uh, well, we still, I'm jumping ahead, we still need well, I think OFCC hopefully, uh, if that was pretty soon. Once we get word from them that they're, they're a partner with us, then that's really that we start taking off.
Should we be concerned? I mean, as you received the assessment, um, the thirty page assessment, um, I guess nothing's done is continuously hitting this like thirty three million at some point, keep putting money into a building, trying to sustain it that is going to eventually have to be, you know, replaced. And was there anything that was really concerning? Like, you know, is is the building safe for the students?
Absolutely it's safe. And they do the assessment, it's what they need to do. They need to say, okay, in the building systems and today's learning environment, the design manual talks about, okay, if they're designing a middle school new, you need to have all these things in there. So and this is what it costs. That's what they think, and that's why they look at all that. If the building's safe, that's a, it's a thing. But but you're right, Mr. President Daniels, is that you can't, you know, maintain, and you just keep putting money into the same building to maintain and maintain and maintain. And the building's getting older, the learning environment's not changing. There's no air conditioning, the same mold. So it's, yeah, it is safe. Oh, absolutely it's safe. If it could, learning requirements for students today, probably not.
Any other questions or? Thank you, Mister Saluka and Mister Hanky for your presentation today and answering your questions and what has gone into it thus far. Do you, he says that, so the next item on our agenda or for discussion this evening is the tentative, um, agenda review. Wanted to nail, does anybody have any questions or Mr. Hanky or Mister Saluka? Are there any items you would like to share with the Board of Education um regarding the regular board meeting agenda?
The only reason I have, the only reason I have, I'm still working on a kind of appropriation measure. Of course, uh, of my appropriation measure, uh, my law just be cast by some government, so that that, so that that, uh,
Mister Hanky?
Um, no, just uh for the public upcoming, uh, you know, president, president of the City of More Policy Committee. Uh, we'll do policy tomorrow, uh, two more policy committees, so, um, super parent, I think, I think they have that. It's uh this year. That's quite frankly, it's uh
Yeah, but with the handbook, um, as I was reading it and trying to look at it through a a D E I lens, but is it possible to change the his and her to a they or their?
We can look at that. I think we have to look at it, quite frankly, uh, through the policy committee on that. We've got to look at it, kind of redoing pieces of it. Wanted to make sure it's not there. It's not, it's not what we want to be. It's where the policies are. Um, and I did take a pretty heavy pen to it myself. Uh, and also, but it it's not, not what we want to do. Just something quite true.
That was one of my questions of how um adversely at the inclusion consultant just reviewed the amendment recommendations.
Yeah, we could do amendment, make recommendations as the okay, but this is not a standard back. Uh, we did need to get it approved for the I was just thinking, I looked at it, this is not going to be a problem.
Were there any changes you can make?
Um.
Other than just, I see, other than you add the new vision, mission, things?
Yeah, there were some, there were just some outdated things in there in terms of what kind of, kind of legalistic things, what kind of things we need to make sure it followed the board policy. It's editorialized, then it took out, it's in the last one, last thing books, um, in terms of, you know, how how we're dealing with them. One of the D E I things I did, I did change at this. Making a general statement about disparage comments in terms of race, gender, sexual orientation, I think. Um, that's just one parent. I think, you know, looking at it through the equity lens and also through board policies, I've made some changes. It needs, it needs to be kind of looked at.
Yeah, I did realize there was some changes and that was one thing that really, as I took to the work, um, briefly that caught my eye.
So, yeah, I mean, it's not a perfect document, but it hold, uh, we're, we're pressing, board policy committee, you know, it's just we kind of go through that process to filter now, I think.
Any other questions regarding the tentative agenda for our regular board meeting December twenty? This is Mister Jim. This is Morrison. No, this can't, no. There's nothing else. Um, anybody have any updates on more education? I'll be heading down to the Q conference on um Wednesday, um, on behalf of the Garfield High School District on Board of Education. Um, I will see that, um, the list of conference topics that I can attend, and if there's anything that stands out that you all would think will benefit um, the governing of the Garfield High School District, um, I will most definitely attend those on your behalf. Um, although I'm going, I'm going on behalf of the entire board, so I welcome you guys to share with me any topics that we feel we should prioritize and I focus on while I'm at the conference, uh, this week. So I'll see you guys that link this evening. And um, if by Wednesday, you can share any suggestions that you may have. I will most definitely, I will also extend the same, um, I also extended this to the equity task force in its entirety, then I did receive feedback from some members of the task force of topics that they think um will be important to meet in school while I'm with. The next item on the agenda this evening as amended is other other matters. Is there any other matters that the Board of Education would like to um discuss during our board session this evening?
Yes, I would like the board to um consider, we talked about this um over a year ago, but, you know, what happened about dedicating a bench um in the gym in memory and honor of Charlie Anderson, um, our super fan, uh, who passed away uh last year. So I would like to um bring this back up to the board for consideration so that we can have this in place and be able to invite the family and have a plaque and resolution in place before basketball, well, beginning of basketball season, um, because that is quickly approaching. I just wanted to put it back on our agenda, um, so that we can take the next steps if everyone's in agreement to, uh, make that happen.
I think, um, our board of meeting did, um, agree that, um, that was something that we would be that we would like to use for what the rest of the question is, was our next steps and actually taking the more listening.
Well, as it deals, we don't write, um, it's the end of the family. Again, this is that here, uh, we're, they authorize this. What I can do on my part is get the black piece together, um, get the rise page together. Presentation, so that makes some sense. Good basketball, let's get the officials all the way out there.
Yep.
So probably be in the separate, early separate. It makes some sense for everybody.
Yes. So then, so that's a okay. Thank you, Miss King, for bringing that back before the Board of Education so that we can take action. Is there any other matters that any other board members would like to discuss this evening that was not on our initial, um, board session? Miss Thomas? Miss Morrison? No, Miss King? No. Okay, was there going to be anything else? I would like to, um, if I can have a motion to enter into executive session for the purposes of discussing superintendent evaluations. Second. Mister Saluka, that was moved by Miss Thomas, the second by Miss King. Can we have all call, please?
Miss Thomas?
Yes.
Miss King?
Yes.
Miss Morrison?
Yes.
Miss Dennis?
Yes, can you please mark minutes for enter into executive session this is forty fourteen.